Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Branch would you please do an invocation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we just thank you so much for today, Lord. We thank you for the rain that we're getting. We just thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, Lord. But we ask you to keep us in our district safe, in Jesus's name I pray.
Amen. All right. I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters. What matters are there?
We have some elections.
Yes.
We have a recommendation for termination and then we have those who have personnel matters.
Okay, and then an employee survey, survey and interim evaluation. So that's the four things. Would someone please make a motion?
I'd make a motion would go into executive session for the things you just listed.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Y'all raise your hands. You have to actually vote. All right, and so it's passed unanimously. All right, to open session?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And the motion's carried unanimously. No action was taken, no decision was made, and we need to vote on hires and termination and so on.
The chairman wants to ask that the board accept the information received in the executive session as it relates to elections.
All right.
I second.
We make a motion first.
If we accept the elections and discuss the executive session.
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously.
I ask that the board receive the two resignations as mentioned in the executive session.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second, somebody?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you.
Finally, I ask that the board receive the information as it relates to the recommendation for termination in the executive session.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept termination at the employee's request.
Second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And we're through with that. Thank you. There wasn't anything else, was there? All right, and now, we don't have public comments yet. All right, the minutes for October 2018 for the regular meeting, October 1.
I move that we accept the minutes as submitted for October 1, 2018.
I second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. The October meeting, October 25th, 2018, special call meeting.
I move that we accept those minutes for October 25th, 2018.
I second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, that's carried unanimously as well. Points of celebration, Dr. McCord.
I want to ask that, where's Wes Park? That's what I'm hearing. Wes is going to share with us the safety facility and infrastructure fund award.
I'm pleased to inform you that the district is in receipt of a $60,000 grant for safety and security, and that is something that we've made application for, and that will provide for things like secured access as well as camera systems and such. We'll help to offset the cost of that, so very pleased to receive that notification by the Department of Ed.
I also would like to add with that, that we are in line to receive additional monies later this month from the State Department of Education, so we are happy for the $60,000, and we definitely look forward to the monies that will be coming at the end of this month.
Yes. And next is the USDA funding award. Was that one Ms. McCall got?
Barbara McCall.
Yes.
This is an exciting time for Marlboro County School District, and I'm going to ask Ms. McCall to come up and share with us the work that she and her team were able to put together.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. McCord. I do have a handout for you that just summarizes some of the things. As Dr. McCord said, we are very excited about the receiving this grant. When I spoke with you back in May, that we were going to pursue this grant and work with a grant writer, it was a new experience for me and for us because it was a grant that required a lot of detailed work and expertise, but the group worked, we were able to submit all the requirements for the grant, it was submitted, it was just, we turned this grant around in three weeks. Three weeks, it was a turnaround of three weeks. And I've just given you a few things, of course, this is the grant information that was in the paper and plus on the district website, but on the next page is a project summary, the third page in, that gives you a little bit of an idea of what this grant will do for our district. This grant will provide eight schools and the infinity with distance learning equipment that will allow them to take classes, virtual field trips, and professional development for teachers. This will be state-of-the-art equipment. This is equipment that is used for telecommunication, hospitals use it for telecommunication for doctors and patients, we're now going to be able to use it in our schools. We wrote the grant, we asked for the full amount, and we received the full amount. We were fully funded. Not all grants are fully funded, but real excited. And I won't read all the project summary, but the one thing that we'll do this year is work to get that equipment installed. There will be permanent equipment, and there'll be floating equipment that we can take from room to room. And each school will have a permanent setting, and will have mobile settings depending on the size. So it is an exciting time for us. We'll be moving into a new era for us, professional development, those things. I think when I talked with you in May, I talked a little bit about the need where we have maybe one teacher in a school in that grade level. Well, this will give an opportunity for all those grade level teachers to do a real-time professional development, but never have to leave their location to do that. It'll offer our students an opportunity to take distance learning. I may have a teacher that is out for a reason, but I can give instruction to that class from another location. So, and it also virtual field trips, which is new to me, but is now becoming a very big thing, virtual field trips. So this next year, getting the equipment set into place and ready for a full rollout. We already have some equipment. Northeastern Tech also received this grant last year, and they put some equipment here in the high school, but we will supplement that equipment at the high school also. They're already doing virtual dual enrollment courses.
So this will enhance our dual enrollment big time.
It sure will, it sure will. It'll also, think about in our smaller schools, a child needs to take Algebra I or English I, and maybe there's just one or two children in that school. Now we can have a way to offer that to every child in every, all of our outline rural schools. One thing I do want to take just a moment though, is to publicly thank some people that were very instrumental in helping us. Representative Pat Hennington wrote a letter of support, and I put a few of those in here. Debbie Turvival, who is the state director for USDA, also wrote a very favorable letter for us, and I do appreciate her effort in her office. Kim Day with Inside Educational Group, and Katrina Lyles, one of our community members. But especially, I want to thank the students, the teachers, and the principals who took time out, and I put a few samples of student letters in here for you to see. This by no means is all of those, it's a very large number of those, but they took their time out to write this, and as I say, we turned this around in three weeks. And then there were key district office personnel that I won't begin to call names, but some of them, like Mr. Tool and Wes, and some others, we just sat in and made sure that we were going in the direction we needed to go in, and they were helping me to understand things about the technology, and could our infrastructure handle this, and our fraud ban, and all of those things. So, I'm very excited. We have this grant with a matching funds, it'll be over $500,000. We match it at $77,000, but that is a very small match for what we'll have, and we will have state-of-the-art, the very best equipment, and enjoy the use of that equipment we hope for years to come.
Wonderful news.
Yes.
I will add with that grant, I know it says fully funded, the district does have a 15% match, which amounts to about $77,000.
Money well spent, wouldn't you think that's wonderful? Great return on the investment.
I think it's money well spent, indeed.
All right, next is character education, student of the month, and Lakeia Bruington of Bennettsville Elementary Media, and Kaylee Ashworth of McCall Elementary. Would you come forward, please?
Also want to ask the principals. What I'm going to do is ask the principals to tell us a little bit about these two wonderful students. As you know, the month before October, we discussed having a character education program here in the district so that we can recognize and celebrate our students for exhibiting good character traits. For the month of October, I believe the two character words were courage, and I want to make sure self-control. And these, these students are nominated at the school by the teachers, and then the school has a committee that takes the nominations and selects one, and then those names are submitted to the district office, and we have a committee that selects two out of the district. And so at this time, I'm going to give these to, two of you to talk about it, to the teachers, and then, Madam Chair, when they complete, I'll ask you to come up front and we'll take a picture with everyone.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. McCord. It's an honor for me to introduce to you Kaylee Ashworth. Kaylee was selected by her teachers to be student of the month because of her great self-control. Kaylee excels in her academic schoolwork in all of her classes because of her focus and dedication in learning. Due to this diligence, Kaylee earned a honor roll for the first nine weeks. Without needing to be reminded of expectations, Kaylee is a consistent leader in the classroom. She follows all school and classroom rules, and always, always has a positive attitude. She is a very curious young lady and asks many questions, which always helps her and her classmates to further their understanding of learning material. Kaylee comes into each class with all of her materials and begins her work, her work right away. If she finishes her work early, she can be spotted reading or writing while her classmates have time to complete their schoolwork. She is a role model for all of her classmates, and we at McCall are very proud of Kaylee Ashworth.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. McCord, and members of the school board. I am so honored to be able to present this award to Ms. Lakeia Bruing tonight. For many of you, Lakeia, you know her story. Lakeia has experienced trauma that no child her age should ever experience, and through this trauma, Lakeia has become such a leader within our school. She always possesses courage and self-control, not only in the classroom, but throughout her leadership positions within the school. Her teachers said that she always puts her best foot forward, she conducts herself with respect and poise, which is something to be very commended for a young lady her age. Lakeia, we are very proud of you. I can't thank you enough for everything that you do in our school. Her amazing parents are here tonight, and we also thank them for everything that they do as well. They are constantly involved. Lakeia also made a B honor roll this nine weeks, and we are very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
I think her parents should come up too. Thank them for a lot.
Both parents. Both, both children. Parents, family, supports, everyone.
I followed y'all's saga on Facebook. Congratulations to both members, totally famous.
Next, Marlboro County School of Discovery Parents is Teachers National Blue Ribbon recipient.
Ask Ms. Marv quick, she's going to speak.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. McCord. During the school year 2017, 2018, Marlboro County School District's Office of Parenting and Family Literacy completed the Parents as Teachers Quality Endorsement and Improvement Process. To qualify, affiliates must meet the 17 essential requirements, prepare a written self-study that illustrates where we meet the 100 quality standards, and some of the standards are divided across organizational support, continuous quality improvement, staff competence, and Parents as Teachers services such as home visitation. It brings me great pleasure to announce that in October of 2018, the Marlboro County School District Office of Parenting and Family Literacy has earned a National Blue Ribbon status in being announced as a Blue Ribbon affiliate for the National PAT Board. Marlboro County School District Parents as Teachers Program is among the highest quality of members and offers home visitation services and parent education. Currently, we serve 35 parents across Marlboro County School District, and our ages range from prenatal to five years old. It brings me great, excuse me, it brings me great pleasure once again to announce we are now Blue Ribbon affiliates of the National Parents as Teachers Program.
Did anyone have any questions about the program? Ms. Marv, quick. I didn't know if you had any questions.
No.
All right. Next, approval from the citizens of Marlboro County Bond Referendum. I think the whole board and Mr. Park, all the staff, the superintendent, everybody wants to thank the citizens for passing the referendum. And next, we have public comments. Mr. Tim McNeil, and he wants to speak to the board.
Thank you, ma'am. Our board members, superintendent members of the community, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
By the way, it's three minutes, not 30 minutes. That was a misprint.
First of all, I want to thank the outgoing board members for your service to this board. Didn't know if I'd be able to come back next month, but I want to thank y'all because y'all have guided this community through some tough times, and we appreciate it. So no matter how that may evolve, we really appreciate your work to the students. Secondly, when we're speaking of the bond referendum, right on time, when we get to spending that money, I think getting our students back to Bennettsville must be a priority. I don't think going to Blenheim should be the norm for those students. There's enough data out there now. The first group is in the 12th grade. There's enough data to show there's no academic benefit by blessing those kids down there. They need to come back to Bennettsville. Also, I'm going to ask the board to put a freeze on hiring international teachers until there's a specific program at the district level in place to support those teachers. My daughter have two news. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the students. And once again, I want to thank the outgoing board members for their service, and let's try to get our students back to Bennettsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Next, legal fees, total cost of HT separation. What is HT?
Mr. Coach requested some information at the last board meeting, asked me to get that information for him, which I believe I shared that with everyone.
Yes, I requested this information because there was some concerns from the citizen of the community for the separation of our former superintendent and our legal fees that we have. That's why I wanted to give this information. Now that I've got it, I have some questions about it, and for the legal fees, $100,000 in legal fees. I just want to know, and I look at here at Ken Childs, who worked for Duff, what's that, what's his name? Dave Duffin? Duffin Childs or whoever. Ken Childs himself, a year worth of work, we pay him $184,000. And I want to know that we, the board, approve all of this work that Mr. Ken Childs did, claiming to have done on our former superintendents? And with that law firm alone, $403,000, and on a normal basis, we usually pay attorney fees for the entire year for all our school business between $100,000 and $130,000. Did we approve Ken Childs, all this work that he did, for $184,000 for one attorney?
Was all of that for that particular thing, or was part of it on mold?
No, this is all for the former superintendent matter. That's what I simply asked for, $184,000 for one attorney, and for all, all their attorney fees is $403,000 total. And that's absurd. I'm trying to find that we approved all the attorney fees for Mr. Ken Childs for $184,000. Because this is a bill that where he worked on a Sunday and Saturday, and what did he do on Sunday, Saturday? Who authorized or approved all these?
That was before me. I get to do like you.
All right.
Well, I think the taxpayers and citizens should want to know. I don't recall a board approval in all of this, but it is what it is. Nobody has an explanation for Saturday and Sunday work. I think we need to bring Mr. Duff in next month, and let them give us an explanation of these fees and charges. Has all these bills been paid?
To my knowledge, all the bills that were submitted prior to me arriving were paid, the invoices were submitted to the district, and those that have come in since my arrival have been paid as well.
No, this is $6,700 fee to Mr. Childs for some work he done with the elections in Columbia. We hired Mr. Childs to do some work, in reference to Mr. Woods, line district or something, because he did some work and charged us $6,700 for it. I'm quite sure we wasn't investigating our own board member. Anybody can help me with that?
I don't see any.
Well, that came in last month's bill. $6,700 that he did work to show us a amount that Mr. Woods was not in his district. We didn't hire him, do you remember, call hiring him lately? Do you, Mr. Branch? Nobody would call hiring him, but he did the work and billed us. I don't think we need to pay that bill. So we as a board did not hire him to do it, or ask him to do it. Do you think we should pay the bill?
I'd have to look at it, that's an attorney's answer. I can take a look at it.
As of right now, I think we need to ask for Childs and...
I'm sorry, say that again.
I don't know if we paid him or not, but I don't think we should pay him. That's basically, it's unethical and it's illegal.
Wait a minute, you don't want to be saying that.
Well, I can, I can sit here and say it. Do you think that us as a board should be getting involved in the elections commission and paying an attorney to investigate our own board member? Yes, I think I can stand here and say that. That's unethical and it's illegal.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern, but I'm sorry that this information, I don't have it, and it would seem to me that we should get it in executive session and then talk about it openly.
We don't know what you're talking about.
We have this, we got this. We got the $6,700.
A little while ago. A little while ago, I haven't had time to read it.
It was on your email, it was on the email that sent it to us earlier in the week.
Well, I was at the national dressage championships, and I don't have time to read it.
I didn't know that. I know I got it. Anyway, well, we can, we can bring that, like bringing attorneys back next month and let them, give them the explanation for that.
Moving right along, student out of state, out of town and state travel approval, DKC.
If I can, let me just make sure I understand the question. Are you asking me to bring the attorneys in to speak to the bills?
Yeah, yeah, and approval of it, and to let them know that I don't think we should pay that $6,700.
Now, I can speak to some portions of the bill.
Okay.
Since my arrival, there have been portions of the bill that we have not paid, and that's because of what I brought to the board's attention back in July, as it relates to how we go about paying invoices for attorneys. And to my knowledge, for specific items, we have not paid those bills, but those bills that you have are some total of all the fees associated with the information that you requested.
Good.
But I can definitely speak to having them appear.
Thank you. That's good.
All right, what is DKC?
Again, just as you asked me a moment ago, I don't have a clue to that, but what I can tell you...
What is that? I mean, the student out of state travel...
I can speak on that. I wanted to find out from the board, because we've had a couple of trips that have come with a request for permission to travel out of state, and it was shared with me that this normally becomes before the board, which is something that's uncommon, and so I wanted to share the board policy as it relates to field trips and those approvals. They come through the superintendent and the designate. Superintendent normally would allow that decision to be made at the school level. That's not something I'm familiar with coming to the board, and so I wanted to ask the board if we could just handle those on a case-by-case basis as it comes to the superintendent from the principals.
A little background on that, maybe Janice, if you want to share it, go ahead.
Well, we might need to talk a little bit about that, because we have had several situations to occur.
And that's fine, if we do, we just have to change the policy on it. I just wanted some clarity.
Yeah, I think we just need to talk a little bit more about that.
In executive session.
Because we have had several things to occur, and when we're looking at the liability that the district has, I think it would be better if we all had an input in what was going on.
Okay. Okay. And so for two trips that are on the docket for approval now, what would you ask me to do exactly? Would you ask me to bring that before the board or allow that to be answered and granted by the principal?
Why don't you just tell us what it is right now and we'll make a motion?
One is in Florida. It's a trip to Florida, I think it's related to band. And the other is a senior trip in the spring at the high school. Now, I can tell you my position on those. I'm not a fan favorite, probably for the same reasons that you are. And as I've shared with the high school principal, if the high school principal is on the trip, then I have no objection to it.
Okay, and so normally when they come with their trips, they let us know how many chaperones are going to be going, how many students are going to be going to the... And we kind of look at it and say, oh, well, maybe it's enough people to keep the eye on us.
It should be a one to 10 ratio, one adult for every 10 students.
So the principal's not going, just the band is going?
The band trip is a different trip. That's in Florida, and that's for competition. You know, you have the holiday bowl games, I believe.
Right.
The senior trip is a trip that seniors routinely take each year. I haven't been here, but I'm imagining that's something that's taking place each year.
Yeah.
And they pick a destination and they travel.
Right.
Where is that destination, senior trip?
That destination, I asked the principal to share that with me.
And he has a good point because...
Yes, because, and I'm just going back to my days in the building as a principal. Especially seniors act totally different with the principal than they do with chaperones because there's something engine over their heads as it relates to graduation and walking the stage. But I'm glad to bring it back to the board.
No, I think we can make, do we need to vote on it?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the trip, providing that a principal or assistant principal would accompany the chaperones.
I second.
Mine is different. I say...
I say the superintendent should... For the senior trip.
That's not going to happen. How about board member?
There have been some...
I don't think we want to start turning out trips for kids that we've been proven for.
It's at no cost to them. They raise their own money.
They raise their own money. Make a motion that we approve the trip.
Got a motion? I second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. And let me tell you that in the past, if someone forgot to bring us the information at the previous regular meeting, rather than having to have a special call meeting, they call and we approve it after the fact.
After they return?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we've done. There've been times that they didn't get the information. I don't think we've done that. I don't remember doing that.
I hope it's not...
Yeah, it has been. No. When... Rip and McLeod made sure that we had prior... We knew that they were going, but somebody, well, for instance, one time they qualified for something because of competition. And then there wasn't a convenient way to get the follow-up trip approved. So we approved it over the phone and then voted on it after the fact.
Now, those trips are viewed differently. If it's a trip related to school for the purpose of academics, then that's different. But again, we can talk about that. I can bring this policy up for revision. You can do with it as you will.
Okay. Goal one, student achievement. Dr. McCord.
I'm going to ask Dr. Sterling Harris to come up and share with us. And while he is coming up, I would like to take a moment to note that report cards for the State Department of Education were scheduled to be released on November 15th. That information has changed. The date has been moved to November 29th. Now, as you know, this is the first report card for schools since the inception of ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And so we're going to use this as an opportunity for benchmarking. We'll have those results for you at the December meeting, although we do have the embargo information. And I'll be happy to share that with you after the board meeting. But the date has moved from November 15th to November 29th.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, and Dr. McCord. Stand here to present to you some information on the recently released 2018 SAT results and the ACT results. Before you, and it was included in your packet, is a copy of the SAT results. It shows the average for Marlboro County, which is a mean composite score of 889. That's on the reading and the math of the SAT. That score represents a two-year gain of 49 points. As you see on the screen, you see a listing of where that average places us in the PD region. But we'd like to share some information. We pride ourselves on preparing all of our kids to be college and career ready. And for that manner, as you notice on the SAT, it does list a percentage of kids testing. As you know, the percentage of kids testing can also affect the average. And in the PD region, we had the second highest amount of kids tested. So therefore, our average reflects the opportunity that we provide for all of our kids to take the test. There are sometimes areas where schools will deny kids taking the test or the code as a way of inflating their average. But we feel like all of our kids deserve the opportunity to be college and career ready. So we do emphasize that we are proud of the 49-point gain over the three years. And we'll continue to work with that in moving our average throughout the PD region. But we will also continue in making sure that all of our kids have an opportunity to take that test in order to show their ability to be college and career ready.
I want to commend our district for that. This is a policy we've put in place, and I think it has created more success for all of our kids and more experience with taking this kind of test. So it's a good thing.
Next, we have the ACT score reports from this year. Our ACT average posted a mean composite score of 15.2. As you can see, we've stayed pretty consistent over the last couple of years. We placed in a tie for 12th in the PD region in that area. And we are providing many activities and interventions at the high school to help us increase our ACT score. We have just recently purchased software that's provided our new digital online curriculum of edgenuity. And in addition to providing opportunities for our kids to have credit recovery and content recovery, it does also offer some courses in the areas of ACT and SAT preparation that our kids will be made available. Our high school, we have a site license, so all kids will be able to take advantage of that. And the high school, with the addition of the labs, are using those to allow those kids to get that preparation in addition to trying to institute SAT and ACT preparation courses in their master schedule for the future. I included in your packet some information related to the past ELC scores. We came up, we found that there were some miscalculations and misassignments of districts to scores. And so in your packet, we included those corrected ELC scores just for your information. We also included some information that kind of helped explain the difference in the high school graduation rate that was reported this summer and the actual rate that will be reported on the report card. As you know, there was a 4% difference. And after investigating, we found that that information that's included in your packet will show you how that happened.
And there is going to be coordination now between adult ed and our high school to...
Yes, ma'am.
In the mix so we can get the graduation right.
Yes, because it's very important as our students move. Students that we reclaim from the streets, students that move here from the high school to adult ed, that we continue a follow-up to make sure that we kind of sort of put a period on whether they graduated or whether we need to look at other alternatives to make sure that that happens. And students within that year or students within their graduation cohort will still count. And that's all I have. You want to share that?
I do want to say just a couple of things. I asked Dr. Harris, and this is a new format for you. I want to always, as much as I can be, I want to be evaluated on things that we can measure, how well we raise the level of achievement of students. And so I ask that, you need some more? I ask that we look at our scores in comparison to the PD region. Now, in some cases, it's going to be comparing apples to apples, and others it might be apples to oranges. But we're all, I think, viewed as the PD region. And so as we, to look at this information, we want our student achievement to rise up. Mr. Dr. Harris mentioned earlier that although the SAT scores may be down a little, the percentage of students that actually test for the SAT is higher than all but one in the PD region. And we're going to be competitive across the board as it relates to academics. And we're going to see our schools rise in the PD area as a result of it and the work of our wonderful teachers and our enthusiastic principals. So I just wanted to share that.
Don't we pay the fee for this, for the SAT too? Don't we do that?
Fee waivers are made possible for certain students, not all students.
We worked on that.
But we also, I believe, remove the barriers for students to take the test. And finally, before you sit down, November 12th through 16th is American Education Week. What a wonderful time it is for us to recognize and celebrate public education at its finest here in Marlboro County. We hope that you share with us and saying to all that are involved in teaching, whether it be in the classroom or in the building or at the district office, we want to acknowledge you for the hard work that you do each and every day to help our students achieve academically.
Yes, thank you.
Go to highly qualified teachers and administrators. Are you doing that?
No, I'm not. I'm having Ms. Robinson come up. I guess I was looking for the lights to come back on, but she probably needs them down anyway. Ms. Robinson is going to provide some information on goal number two.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, board members, Dr. McCord. The first item is the introduction of revision of policy IJOC-R, school volunteers. We are recommending that the task of approving volunteers be done by the superintendent or his or her designate.
I have a question about that. Is this the appropriate time for that or not? The reason I have a question is that our principals have done it in the past, as I'm sure you know. If there were ever any questions, then they would refer or appeal to the HR director or to the superintendent. One of the reasons we set it up that way is we have a rural school district. And it's hard for the superintendent necessarily to know all of the stakeholders. And the principals are closer to the volunteers and to the community. We don't want to appear that we don't want our people to come in, you know. And I know that's not, that's not what you intend. But I think that personally, that it's a better policy for the principals to handle it and call on you if they have questions and certainly send it to you, you know, in terms of that. We don't want to discourage volunteers. I want to share something with you. This is a story I heard when I was walking in this campaign. We have a lot of people who want to volunteer in our schools, and we have to vet them because we have to send this report, we have to get that, because we want safety in our schools. We have so many young people, particularly our young males in the 20 to 25 to 30, who have young children in primary schools, who made a mistake. They might even have been arrested. I'm not talking felonies, I'm talking other things. Who have turned their lives around and want to be a part of their children's education. But because we don't have any room for flexibility, if something pops up on that, you know, there has been, there have been problems with pretty many schools. I just want to share that with you, that we have, you know, that's, no, yeah, that's happened many times. And the parent coordinators will share with you the need for us to have them involved in a protected environment, you know, where the principals are there or somebody. I'm just saying, and I know you don't mean to discourage volunteers, but we have not had a really good situation with volunteers in our schools in a number of years. I love what you have listed as the possibility for volunteering. I think that's great. I just want to bring this issue to your attention as something that has been brought to my attention many times. Am I making myself clear? Do you all know what I'm saying about this?
I'd like to speak on that when I have more.
But I also think that our principals are closest to them. They're going to know what the problems are and what the pluses are. And I just, I think that's a better situation. You know, it's very hard not to delegate. And ultimately, the buck stops with you if something goes wrong. I understand that completely. And I'm wondering what the problems have been, why you would make this change, why you would make this recommendation. I'm sure you're going to tell me.
I can. First, let me start off by saying volunteers can still receive the information from the school. We want and encourage volunteers throughout the district. The reason we would like to have the information come to the district office is because we're responsible for vetting all volunteers. There are situations as recently as this school, this previous school year in the upstate as well as in the midlands where volunteer situations have not gone correctly. And the disconnect has been if school A has someone on their list and they don't share it, and then a person goes to another school and says, I'm on school A's list, I'd like to volunteer here. There's no way for them to cooperate that. At the district office, we would vet those volunteers through our bib system. And I bring that up because it's nothing but a background check, sled check. And when you mentioned criminal activity, we do take a look at what the nature of the criminal activity is. So some items will not be pushed forward. Some items will be pushed forward depending on the charge and the time of the charge. Some may be criminal domestic violence for whatever the case may be. If it's against kids, of course, we definitely don't want that to occur. But we have to be safe and secure. Or let me say it this way. I need to be safe and secure that at all times, we're providing accurate lists to all of our schools for those individuals that have been approved. And I just would like to see that funnel to and through the district office because if a decision is made as to whether or not we're going to move something forward, I'd like to have a shot at that. And when I say I, my designate, we would like to have a chance to vet that. And that's for the safety and security of all students.
Maybe I read this thing wrong, but I assumed that everything came from the principals to you all on vetting because you're the only people that can vet it.
Right.
That you would have a full list of all that. I didn't mean to exclude that. I just don't want to take the principals out of the mix of making recommendations. That's all I'm saying.
We're not doing that.
We just had a situation recently where a volunteer was included on a field trip that had not been properly vetted. Fortunately, we're able to move beyond that. But again, knowing that we have to have a better system in place so that we don't violate anyone, I'm not worried so much about the liability that it would bring to the district more so than I am endangering the lives of young people.
And I think it puts more of a burden on the principal to have to hold that responsibility in our district. We, as parents, we look at the district, the overall overseer of our children when they're in the school. So I think they should have the overall burden to making sure that it's properly vetted. I think it's a good policy.
I agree with that. I'm not disagreeing with that at all. I just think that the principals, they should go to the principals. I don't think you're going to have time to interview every volunteer, or you are either, and do your job.
You don't interview them?
You know, well, I mean, told you, no, it's just, you know, come to you.
Let me interject something. Unless it's changed in the last three or four years since I left, maybe a principal can answer this for me, Ms. Reddy. Don't, I mean, doesn't the districts, does the district still have the final approval on volunteers? Don't they still have the proof? So all we're doing is making the policy what it should be. So all we're doing is making the policy what it should be.
Right, yeah. Just streamline.
Because it's already being done.
Right. But the biggest difference is we'll be responsible for posting it.
Okay, well, we used to get the paper back that approved it and let us know that that person was approved. It's really getting the policy in line with practice.
Right.
And the other thing, I didn't see next page, but I guess I need to ask, do we still require volunteers to have a TB test?
That's a revision that we're also making.
Okay.
We took that out because that's, the feedback we received was that, that was a barrier.
Very big deterrent, especially when they told them that they had to.
For a vote on this.
Well, this would be for information tonight, not to vote on.
Because the original policy.
To my understanding, the first time is for information. Second time is for reading.
Well, our policy, our policy says, I think, and I may be wrong, Mackie, that it says approval of volunteers will be done by the principal. That's what our policy has been.
Correct. No, what we're doing now is the district office is doing it. So tonight, we're bringing it to you so that what we're putting in, what we're already in practice doing, that's also in our policy. The procedure in place that I found in August was that it's being done at the district office. The parent volunteers, principals still can make recommendations, they still send them to the district office to get the packet, but the approval process, the vetting, goes through the district office. The policy currently reads that the approval will be done by the principal and we would like to remove that. Approval for the name to be on the official list will be done from the district office and the district office every week will send the official list out. So there will just be one list.
I knew the policy did not say it went to the superintendent. I just want to clarify that.
Correct, that's what we want to change.
I have a question. And so you said that the requirement for them to have the TB test, skin test was taken out of it?
That is the recommendation, yes, ma'am.
I have a little issue with that, of course, being in the health field, because once that parent has been exposed to tuberculosis, when you're putting them on a bus with 20 other children in chakarrone positions or whatever, I think that they need that TB test. Well, yeah, with drug screening, I mean, we sled checking.
We sled check, we.
We sled check and we can TB test them.
And it's a recommendation that we remove it because we've been told that it is a barrier and I can tell you consistent with what I've seen in other districts, that is not a requirement. The $25 that folks are asked to pay simply to be a part of schools, they're not willing to do that.
Don't some districts pay for that fee?
No, again, I have, I don't know of a district that asks for a TB test. So what districts have paid is for the sled background check, but not for a TB test.
I think that, and this is just me, most people have had a TB test.
At some point.
Teachers are required to have a TB test when they get their certification. That's the last time you have to have one. So for 41 years, I never had another one, you know, but, so if you've ever had one, perhaps you could go with that because that's what teachers are doing. Our certified staff has one TB test the entire time or required TB test one time in their certification career.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mackie. I'm going to have to look at the CDC site and see what they say about it.
I think it's kind of ironic. I'm not being critical, I understand TB is not a thing to be joked about, but it's kind of ironic that you require a volunteer to have to have it. I think they actually required it for them every year and then teachers don't have to have it.
So you've brought us the information and now next month it can be changed. And I appreciate that. I hope you know I wasn't attacking you. And next, employee master sheets and declaration of wages.
Do you have a copy of the employee master personnel sheet in your packet? In October this year was the first time, to my knowledge, that we issued from the HR Department an employee master sheet for all of our employees. The employee master sheet is a declaration of wages and if you look in your packet, Dr. McCord was so gracious to let us use his as an example, but at the top is his name, underneath would be his address, his contact information, his employee ID number, his demographics that are listed. To the right is his tax information, exemptions, federal withholdings, and also his salary is listed on the declaration of wages. The second section is his deductions that he has chosen. It shows the employer cost and the amount that the employee is paying and then finally his current leave balance is shown as the day you print it. There's a second page to this, or in some cases, if it's not a lot, page one, is where the employee will sign and also the building administrator department supervisor will sign also. This year, we did it in October. Next year, we will send these out for 12-month employees on July 1st and then for teachers, the first week they return. The importance of doing this is, one, teachers will see what's in Smart Fusion. If there's an error with their, or a change in their address or telephone number, Wes Park will speak to you later on about employee self-serve, but they can go in without ever having to come into the district office or even call us and make their own change to their address or phone number or even their W4 information. The second reason why you want to do this at the beginning of the year or the contract year is if a teacher realizes that there's an error with their salary or there's a question about their years of experience, that's the time to address it so that changes can be made or you can look into the matter. But everyone will sign off, that they agree to the terms that they're coming in the school year with, is filed in everyone's personnel sheet, the budget is done.
I also would like to mention the reason for this declaration of wages is so that everyone will have advance notice as to what they are currently paying as it relates to their benefits so that when open enrollment comes in October each year, they can be prepared to make changes. That is for efficiency purposes. Employees should know what they make hourly, what they make daily, what the pay is as it relates to the pay scale, salary, pay, salary pay scale, as well as what's going out. They also have included in that information, as you see, the number of days they recruit over time. All of these are important enough that it should be handled prior to the year beginning. I bring that to light because one of the things that I've made mention to you before is the inordinate amount of requests that I've received early on and still to this day about straightening up someone's pay. I was supposed to get this amount, I was supposed to get that amount, but no one has anything in writing. And so when an employee signs off on this, this is going to be their statement that I am in total agreement with what's being offered to me for my time here in the district.
But they can't make changes without consulting you, except for address and phone number.
Only their demographic information, ESS.
And how safe is this from identity theft or anything?
How safe? It goes, it goes to the employee.
Only?
Only.
All right, next revise leave procedures, instructions and forms.
Another initiative we're doing in my department is revising our leave reporting and acknowledgement form. We've changed the instructions and we've also, every school or department now has a leave administrator who is responsible for leave. The form has been revised where the employee can request the day in writing. The department chair or principal will approve it and then once the leave is taken, when the employee returns on section three, they will acknowledge it with a signature that that leave request is still accurate. Because what can happen is, for example, you request a day Friday, that you're going to go on a professional leave day. And just my case, I had a relative die over the weekend. So even though I requested it on Friday for PD day, which I plan to take, that really can turn into a personal day when Friday comes. So when I come back on Monday morning, I need to acknowledge that either the day Friday really was still P day, a PD day, or really I changed it to a bereavement day. So we're just going through and putting some systems and procedures in place. Also, in a few weeks, hopefully December 1st, we will move to a process where everyone is putting their leave in electronically, the request. So we're, right now, we have a paper form. The plan is to eventually get to an electronic process, but the biggest step is first having a leave administrator at every site and every school who is ultimately responsible and discussing it with the leave administrator at the district office. Another reason why we need that in place is that we do use Kelly Services and we have to reconcile those monthly statements so that all the subs that were called in and all the leave matches up to the invoices every month with Kelly Services.
So you're hiring somebody new at every school?
They just appointed someone that, they were really already doing it, we just have a designated list now that that's your contact person for leave.
It says here that you must make an appointment with the Human Resources Office to discuss your leave request if you will be out of work for scheduled surgery or treatment.
That's your FMLA.
That's FMLA.
FMLA. We are taking a very proactive approach to extended leave this year to make sure that employees understand what FMLA is, what their rights under FMLA are. So everyone's time is precious, so we do ask them to make an appointment because we do have to have an in-depth conversation about their leave balance, if they're going to be responsible for their insurance. So we do ask them to make an appointment so that, one, we can have the information ready for them, especially if they're going to have to pay some of the benefits, we would like to provide that information with, for them already, the number of days that they have. So we do ask them to make an appointment.
Upon the FMLA, how many days does it have to be out before you consider FMLA? Does the employee have to be out?
I would like to be notified at five, just to see if it's a possible issue, but then 10 is the.
So five days or more, will you consider FMLA?
Five, I want you to at least have a conversation with me, the site.
That's not what I'm asking. How many days do you have to be out of work before you consider FMLA?
10, 10.
So at 10 days or more is considered FMLA?
It may be considered FMLA. It's just, it's just an application process where we decide whether it is FMLA or if it's not. Everyone may not be eligible for FMLA. So that's the process where we will start the conversation of, one, is it leave that's approved by FMLA and even if you are eligible for FMLA.
So if a teacher or employee is getting ready to go out of work for surgery, you know, going to be out of amount of time, they have to make an appointment with you first?
Yes.
Okay. But just after a cold couple of days?
No.
And again, that's for the protection of the employee. We want them to know what their rights are as it relates to FMLA.
That's not the way this reads. That was a great question because I had it too and, you know, it says, "If you will be out of work due to scheduled surgery or treatment." That's not FMLA necessarily. You must make an appointment with the Human Resources Office to discuss your leave request.
But you have to let them know.
They got to have surgery, they need to come in and ask you and talk to you about it. They want clarity on this, that's why.
Well, and it would depend, but I think to alleviate that concern is maybe we'll put or add some language that says, "If you are scheduled to be out for surgery, expect it to last more than.
It needs to be clarified.
10 days. We ask that you make an appointment. Because again, what we found is that when individuals are out, they're just out. And so you start.
This is good, I know you're trying to pull it in.
Right, you start a process well beyond when it would have normally begun.
And if it's an emergency, they can just call you on the.
Correct.
Almost definitely.
Yeah, we're just trying to be proactive. Go ahead and have those conversations with people, let them know their leave balance ahead of time. So that's why we ask them to make an appointment, come in so that we can address the problem at the beginning, not at the end.
I appreciate that addition, I think that would help.
You make a note of that.
And you expect it to be over 10 days.
Okay. We'll make that change.
Mr. Parks, you're up. Financial report as of October 31st, 2018.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. McCord, you have the financial report dated as of October 31st, 2018. I don't know if you have any questions regarding Florida, but I'll be glad to entertain those at this time.
Any questions? Update on new funding.
Okay. As mentioned earlier, the district received confirmation of various grants. The first grant listed here is safety and facility infrastructure. That is, of course, designed to provide for cameras, security access. We also received $54,000 for salary and benefits for an SRO officer with the city of Bennettsville. So that is, that person will be providing services to the district, new officer. We received $15,770 for risk control grant with South Carolina School Board's Insurance Trust and that is really designed to aid the district in making those type of safety improvements that will hopefully help us to reduce our workers' comp premiums as well and make our schools safer than they already are. And lastly, $750 from the unclaimed property office. Dr. McCord forwarded me an email and said, "Hey, we've got some money with the state unclaimed property office and looking at it, we determined there were three vendors and they went back for quite a number of years that had refunds that we hadn't either received or cash for whatever reason," but that was $750.
And just to add, these are all new monies to the district. So I think that's big and encouraging.
In addition to our budget money, yeah.
In addition to, yes.
Next is.
Oh, sure. $54,000, that is for a new officer or to pay existing officer?
No, that is for a new officer.
And that is for the city of Bennettsville. And so we've had conversations with Chief Kevin Miller and.
Yes, Max Alderman.
Max Alderman. And so they submitted the information to the State Department. When they have the officer on board, then a check will be distributed to the city of Bennettsville. That officer will serve our areas at BIS, BIS and BPS.
You ready to move to update on employee self-service module?
The district has fully implemented the employee self-service module provided by Smart Fusion, our district's financial and operations software. ESS provides employees access to important financial and related information regarding their employment with the district. What I've done is I've included actual pages printed out of ESS and I just went, I just pulled my account up and deleted some of the, edited some of the information out, but I've attached actual reports for your review. The first report shows current and year-to-date earnings and deductions, mandatory and elected exemptions claimed for withholding purposes and bank account information. The next report shows employee and employer costs for various deductions and expenses. This report allows employees to see the effective cost of their compensation package. The following report provides year-to-date wages for gross, federal, social security, Medicare and state purposes, along with withholdings for federal income tax, social security, Medicare and state purposes with withholdings for federal income tax and social security, I'm sorry. The next page shows the election to change income tax withholdings using the W4 for federal and state purposes. So the employee can make those changes through ESS without having to come to the payroll office to make those changes. The following page displays options to edit direct deposit information. After that, there's a summary on sick leave and annual leave, if applicable, an employee may. On sick leave and annual leave, if applicable, an employee may see and print copies of checks for current year as well as W-2s. Many times lending institutions require employment verification in terms of a recent pay stub. And presently, there are three years of W-2 forms for every employee who was within the district from 2015 to date. So they can actually go and pull up those W-2 forms back to 2015. In summary, ESS is a very powerful tool for our employees and provides direct information 24/7.
And I think this is a big advancement for the district, again, having the ability, employees having the ability to see what they are expecting to get for their current check is going to help us if there is a shortage. Of course, you'd like to be able to capture that on the front end as opposed to the back end. And so that information is shared with employees, what is it, three days in advance, which gives
That is correct.
Wes and his team an opportunity to make corrections. And then lastly, one of the added benefits, unintended benefits, is that employees can use this information at the end of the year with their final paycheck to help them get a head start on the tax situation for the upcoming year. So they can use this as verification as opposed to having to wait until the end of January for the W-2 forms.
How much is it costing us, or is it costing us anything to provide smart
It's already built into our existing, we've added in our system, so.
Ready for update on district-wide building roofing projects?
I think you missed one there. He was doing a financial analysis.
Oh, sorry, financial analysis for three months.
And I think this is a big deal, so I definitely want to make sure he gets a chance to talk about this.
Yeah. Financial analysis is comparing the last three months ending September 30th, 2018, with September 30th of 2017. What I've done is I've attached reports by object for general fund operations with expenditures to date as of September 30th, 2018, and September 30th, 2017. The first set of reports are in summary form, the next set of reports are by location, and the last sets are by object detail. The good news is that September 30th, 2018, the district's expenditures are $111,960 less than the same period last year. Specific areas of reduced expenditures include reduced administrative support salary expenses, reduced contracted instructional services, reduced contracted professional and technical expenses, reduced cleaning services expenses contracted, reduced supplies and materials purchased. Three significant reasons for the reduction include Dr. McCord's review of existing vacant positions and some consolidation slash elimination, Dr. McCord and Human Resources monitoring and managing of contract substitute services, and Dr. McCord principles and special services, renegotiating and consolidating use of personal care assistance in the district. From all indications, we're having a good year financially.
That's really good news.
And I don't want to let it be stated, Dr. McCord is the team, so I give credit where credit is due, we have a team that's working together.
So when you fire people, it saves money?
Say that again?
Never mind, I say when you fire people, it saves money.
We haven't fired
I'm kidding, Dr. McCord.
But don't say stuff like that out in the public.
We have had some custodians to complain that they did not get positions, and I brought this to your attention, and you assured me that that was not the case.
Those were not employees of the district.
They worked for someone else. I just want to get that out in public if I may.
That was a contractual arrangement that had not been approved by the board and did not follow procurement. We just
That needs to get out there, that's wonderful.
Well, it's out there, I mean, you just helped me get it out there.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
That's different than saying we let folks
And congratulations on saving the money.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have a complaint from teachers at the high school, which I will bring in here because we're talking about cleaning services. Is it true that you presented brooms to all of the teachers at the high school, or is that just a rumor?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
It's like the other rumors that you hear. I get blamed for everything.
I know.
I wouldn't have a clue as to who has a broom and who doesn't have a broom.
Okay.
I don't know how
I heard this about 25 times.
You can hear it 27 times, it doesn't make it true.
So you did not hand teachers at the high school a broom?
I don't like brooms.
I don't have a clue as to anything related to a broom.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did that publicly? All right, so now update on district-wide building roofing project.
Go ahead.
Right, at this point in time, of course, we've had vendors come to the various locations, of course, the high school, the school locations. We've also been through the insurance process as well, we're still working on that claim. We are receiving information on the cost associated with those emergency type of repairs. Outside of that, I don't have anything more to report right at this point.
We do have quotes, and we're going to award this week, but right now, we don't have any quotes that will exceed $50,000 per school. But days like today, we want to make sure that we don't have any more days like today where our buildings are getting wet.
And is the School of Discovery roof, were we able to get a new roof at the School of Discovery?
We had a new roof installed at the School of Discovery, I don't know whether it may have been
It was about two months ago, three months ago.
So it should be holding, okay, great.
All right, policy development and implementation. Revision of new policy DKC-R, expense authorization and reimbursement first reading.
Very good. Changes are necessary to our travel reimbursement policy to comply with federal regulations, which indicate times employees must be out of district to receive meal reimbursements. Rates that were included in the last policy change in November of 2016 were designed to comply with in-state federal requirements. The policy change is recommended to provide a slight increase in the reimbursement rate. Any amounts in excess of the federal program's rate for federal funds will be paid from state or local funds to remain in compliance. Attached, please find the revision to the expense authorization reimbursement policy for first reading. The rates are as follows, breakfast $7, it was formerly $6.
And you gave him another dollar.
Gave him another dollar.
$6 for breakfast.
Seven now, right?
But the total amount is going up, just let him
Lunch, eight, formerly seven. Dinner, in-state, 15, formerly $12 for both in-state and out-of-state. And then, of course, out-of-state would be $20. The time changes in the policy document regarding whether meals are reimbursable are as follows. For breakfast, must depart before 6:38 a.m. and return after 11 a.m. Formerly was just that you had to depart before 8 o'clock, and this is to comply with federal requirements. Lunch must depart before 11 a.m. and return after 1:30 p.m. Formerly, must be out of district at noon. Dinner must depart before 11, 5:15, and return after 8:30. Formerly was just return after 6 o'clock. Other changes include the elimination of advanced travel payments. Recommendation here is to approve the policy DKC-R as amended for first reading.
Did you give the total amount of the change, just the annual amount?
The total amount, formerly, it was $25 a day, now $30 in-state, 35 out-of-state.
Make a motion to approve this policy?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Discussion.
Oh, do God.
Yeah, well, I just want to discuss one thing, I mean,
$7, $8?
$7 for breakfast, you can't eat in a way with McDonald's or Harde, you can't even go to Hutter House for $7.
Now, can I?
I'd like to at least say $10 at least.
Oh, my God.
But we have, we have to be in compliance with the federal
$10, a lot of compliance.
But here's the other, here's the other issue as it relates to the rationale, and that's, again, coming from the guidelines that we receive. The reimbursable monies are to assist with the feeding of individuals. So if you take the seven that we give you, plus the seven that you would have normally used for breakfast, then you can eat a meal, you can go to Shon's. You know, and don't get me wrong, I too, and I think I've had this discussion, I have some issues with, you know, how much it costs. I mean, you can't eat breakfast at a hotel for under $20. But if we were in Bennettsville, South Carolina, we would eat breakfast anyway. So the cost that we would spend to eat breakfast in Bennettsville, plus the cost that we're reimbursing, will make us whole.
All right.
So we're taking out the advanced travel?
Yes.
Yes, we reimburse on the back end, yes, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
And I call for the question. Advanced travel, you would still pay the motel
Oh, yes, sir.
The registrations and
These are just the reimbursements, yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed.
Good thing, y'all want
And Mr. Coach Menor opposed, so we've got one, two, three, four, five.
She didn't vote.
Well, when I said opposed, your hand went up.
No, ma'am, I might have been slow cutting it down.
All right, just Mr. Coachman. You got to get that baby back down, you know?
I'm gonna give you a dollar.
Give you three more dollars.
Establish new policy, second reading, this one basically says you don't use public money for private things.
Make them up, yes.
Since all these are second reading, can't we just bundle these up and go ahead and approve them?
I've got, I've got one that I've got a
Okay, let's single that one out.
Which one's that?
The IKAR, which is grading a system.
Okay, well, can we go ahead and approve the others, bundle them up?
Yeah, let's do that. I make a motion that we approve for second reading, revision to board, no, establish new policy, second reading, revision of policy AC, revision of policy GBA, revision of policy GCE, revision of policy GCEC, revision of policy GCF, revision of policy GDF.
Good job. Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You don't vote.
No, I'm not, I'm talking
Let the man vote.
Sorry about that, but you get caught up in it sometimes.
You are.
So all of them passed it, and then you want to go back to the one about
Yeah, we didn't do anything with this one.
The only thing that I saw in the very first part of, on the first page, where it says students will receive no grade average but low 60 for a reporting period semester averages or yearly average in the computer recording system. That policy, that practice was put in place years ago so that a student who was failing had an opportunity to pull it up and pass, and it wouldn't be mathematically impossible for him or her to pass. Well, 60 is now passing, so nobody fails. We need to go to 50.
It is 50.
With that same policy.
It is 50. Mr. Norrie, it is actually 50. This policy, I think, was pulled from what was still listed on the website, but actually, if you remember, shortly after you came on the board, we came back up and readjusted that to a 50.
So we're good to go?
Yes, the one that will actually be prepared and sent in for adoption, for approval before being put on the website, will reflect the 50 that you sent in.
So the change should be right here. The change should be right here.
Pick a motion.
Right.
I'll make a motion that the IKAR policy be adopted with this 50 as the low grade below average.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's passed unanimously. Goal five, supervision and evaluation of the superintendent, Dr. McCord.
I think Jimmy Ford, you want to put in the PowerPoint. I do realize it's 7:30, so I can hear in the voices.
Well.
Okay.
Well.
Now, just if you would, just bear with me. Do you have a clipboard for me?
Wow.
Okay. Back in July, when I began, I presented the board a 90-day plan, things that I wanted to hopefully accomplish over a period of 90 days, and we were able to do a lot during those nine days, and I'll wait for this PowerPoint slide to take place. I won't read through this word for word, you have the information, and it'll be posted on the district website, but there are some things that I thought we definitely needed to take a look at after my first 90 days. Points for us to be successful moving forward, we have to begin with growing positive relationships with everyone. I know there are times when I've been accused of moving too fast, but I can say to you with pride that I'd rather be accused of moving too fast than moving too slow. We have been able to do a lot in a short period of time with the help and efforts. As I said earlier, we have a very enthusiastic principal leadership team, and we have great teachers here in this district that have allowed me to move forward with the work that needs to be done. And I don't want to not mention the workers at the district office, and so I can't get this to work, Jimmy. It's on, it was on. One of the very first things that I believe we need to work on here in the district moving forward is we have to have a positive relationship between the board and the superintendent. In order for us to be successful, the community, as demonstrated by their trust in us and allowing us with the yes vote last week, I think says to us that we need to be intentional and deliberate about our actions, our actions both in public as well as behind closed doors. And so that's an area that I can definitely tell you I'm looking forward to us addressing together as a team. Together, we have to create systems of operation that are comprehensible and sustainable. We want to raise expectations, not only in how we work, but why we work. I think many times, we talk about the work that needs to be done without spending enough time on why we need to complete the work. Every child that graduates in the school district, we want them to be equipped with the necessary skills so that they can enjoy the quality of life, whatever it is they decide to do in life, we want them to be able to do so because, of course, they deserve it. And so areas of focus that I'd like for us to continue moving forward with, boardsmanship, I mentioned in the past, the need and desire for us to have workshops where we can talk about and clearly define roles and responsibilities as we move forward. Systems-based organizations, we have to continue to align the work that we do with systems as opposed to just doing work for the sake of doing it for many reasons. One, we have to make sure the work is being done. Many of the times that we have begun with our efforts here, we've been stalled because of items or barriers that were placed well before our arrival, and we're slowly removing those barriers, as you have seen demonstrated tonight with some of the presentations. Our talent pool, we want to continue reaching out and trying to find the best and the brightest to join the best and the brightest. I heard you mentioned earlier about who we have in the district. We like to continue with our recruiting efforts as well as our retention efforts. Student achievement, that goes without saying, we have some work that needs to be done when we discuss the report cards that will be released later this month, next month. We'll talk more about the student achievement that needs to be done, but the focus has to always be on student achievement. All of the decisions that we make have to be related to how we're going to improve student achievement. Communications, self-included, making sure that we do a better job of communicating, again, the why we are doing things the way that we are, is going to be, in my opinion, one of the greatest things that we can do. We want staff and the community alike to know that we're going to be completely transparent with all of our actions, and that we are going to be with all of our actions, and that we are going to be and stand ready to be held accountable for what we say we're going to do. Another big issue that I'd like for us to address, uh, moving forward, is the pay scale, the pay structure, uh, for our employees. Uh, one of the things that I'll present later on at a future board meeting is where we stack up in comparison to school districts in the PD region. Now, we may not be the richest, uh, district in the PD region, but we can definitely do better by our employees, and the only way we can do that, again, is to continue tightening the belt in some of those areas that we have begun to tighten belts. Uh, we have to be fiscally responsible enough to say no to those things that we don't need in the district, because again, at the end of the day, I want employees, all employees, not just some employees, to be able to have a salary that they feel good and comfortable about, so much so that we don't have to worry about losing them to neighboring districts. Improving facilities, uh, this is big on my list. Uh, again, uh, these things won't happen overnight, uh, but we can get started tonight, making sure that we improve the conditions of the facilities that we teach our students, that our employees come in every day to give us, uh, the work that they give us. We want them to feel safe and secure, as well as, uh, we want them to know that they're in a comfortable environment conducive to learning. We have student enrollment issues that need to be discussed and addressed. Uh, we had some conversations previously about how we're going to maximize our spaces at our schools. Again, that's going to come with tough conversations, and we need to all be on board with how we're going to move forward, because unless industry, uh, comes through into Marlboro County in the near future, we're going to look at an enrollment or population of students that's going to continue to decline, although the numbers are not as large as what was previously reported, uh, the numbers are in fact, uh, shrinking. I mentioned the fiscally responsible budget, uh, but more than anything, making sure that we exhibit good character. I, I want to at all times, uh, be a model, an example. I want my character to be judged on how I respond and react in times of inconvenience, not so much as convenience, uh, because there are things that are going to take place in the district that are going to require for tough decisions to be made, and I want to make sure again that we're leading in the right direction. And so those are items that, uh, I believe will move us forward. Is there another slide that's going to come up? Okay. And this one, again, sir?
You said another slide?
It is, is another presentation. Thought it was right behind me. Again, not going to read through each of these, but I'm going to go over the five focal points, and then you have that information. Uh, you can see that at your leisure, but, um... This is, say it again?
It's in the publisher.
It'll move, I mean, it just moved. We won't be able to see all of it, because I don't think I'm going to read it all, because I don't think everybody wants to hear it at this time, but, uh, goal one, or objective one, to begin and establish effective board superintendent relations, and again, all we tried to do is mention some of the things that we were able to accomplish in a short period of time. And I'll just read a little bit of this. Meeting one-on-one with each board member, establishing a direct line of communication, communication with board members, responding to questions and concerns from board members, and in time and fashion, successfully, uh, secured unanimous vote from the board to place the item on the ballot related to the referendum, uh, in a short period of time. I've attended school board conferences with the board, uh, we've had opportunities to get to know one another, uh, outside of the school district. Uh, we have, uh, also been present at school board advocacy meetings together, uh, the superintendents' conferences that have been held have, uh, each, uh, contributed to my understanding and my role and my relationship with the board, and then assisted the board in hiring a full-time administrative assistant to better communicate, uh, with the public. I think those are things that took place early on, and, uh, we, we stand proud about those things. Objective two, to establish an action plan to increase student academic achievement, and again, just reading through a few of these, uh, you'll see some of the things that have taken place, uh, during this short period of time, uh, and things that will continue to take place. Objective three, to strengthen staff morale and community trust. Uh, there are many, uh, things, uh, that together as a team, we were able to accomplish, uh, meeting with all personnel in the district, whether it be cafeteria, transportation, uh, custodian, maintenance, uh, meeting with all district level staff, uh, having opportunities for, uh, staff to meet with the superintendent, uh, establish monthly meetings with the superintendent's teacher of the year council, uh, leadership team with the student advisory committee here at the high school. I've been in and visited over thirty classrooms throughout the district, so I'm not a sit-in-the-office, stay-behind-the-desk type of superintendent, I'm out and about. Uh, established, uh, meetings with Locoin County officials, uh, to include police chief, the sheriff, the mayor's, uh, economic business partners, uh, the chamber of commerce, I've spoken at the Rotary on two occasions, as well as joined the Rotary. We established a faith-based economic partnership and continue to grow that list, uh, each, each day. I've visited and worshiped in over thirteen churches, uh, which I think is important. Again, I think schooling is more than just inside the walls of schools, it extends into the community, because we are just a reflection of what takes place in our communities. Uh, spearheaded efforts to bring, uh, multiple donations, uh, here to the district to help after the catastrophic hurricanes that have taken place, uh, here recently, and I regularly meet with local community members, whether they be small business owners, non-elected citizens, and just the average, everyday, uh, person that I meet throughout Marlboro County. Uh, I think I've conducted myself at all times as a professional, I made myself available, uh, not just, uh, by sharing my email, but my cellphone, and making myself amenable to any meeting, uh, that anyone requests me to attend. Objective four, to improve district organizational services, and again, not going through each of these, but, uh, just making sure that, uh, you know, some of those things that have been done have not been done easily. Uh, we have, uh, come in, uh, hit the ground running, uh, trying to make changes, and change sometimes is going to, uh, be different, uh, but if it's going to be transformational, then that's what I'm looking forward to. Transformational is different than just change. Transformational says that when we get to a point where we want to get back comfortable, we go back to the way we used to do things. Transformational means we will not return, we will only be better as a result of the changes in the systems that have taken place. And then objective five, to develop current professional development opportunities for teachers and other, uh, staff here in the district. Again, I'm not reading through each of the things that have taken place, but we want to continue with our efforts to provide quality-based professional development that staff not only request, but are wanting and willing to use. We have to get away from the model that we are providing folks with, uh, things that they may not necessarily want, and so we'll continue with that, uh, throughout our next, uh, nine months, when I get to my yield evaluation. So, again, I went through this as succinctly as I could, because I know, uh, everyone likes to look at their watch, uh, but if you have questions, then I'll gladly entertain and answer those to the best of my ability at this time.
Not tonight, Doc, we ain't gonna bother tonight, you gave enough information. Might hit you early in the morning though.
We can go get something here.
You won't have to pay more than seven dollars.
Good job, Michael.
About fifteen.
Michael, that's about as good as Miss Nann way back with "I want my chicken."
Yeah, right, you might have to buy one.
Also, if I can, I would like to say thank you of principals and district staff here, if you would just stand up for a moment. I'd like to say thank you for your support, I'd like to say thank you for, uh, thank you for allowing us to be grateful together, so, uh, you want to make sure that I'm not, uh, miserable and pointing that out, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
What?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. We got the whole page over here, you bitch. Oh, oh, Maria.
Roll back, roll back.
Man, Jackie told me we were finished, I followed Jackie.
Care South memorandum of, memorandum of agreement request, Mr. Parks, are you doing that?
I, I've got it, this is a continuation, I, I have, uh, this is a continuation of the MOA that was, uh, granted and approved last month, where we have allowed for Care South to come and provide services to our students. Uh, this one will allow Care South to come in and provide services to employees. Again, this is at no cost to the district, uh, but it's going to allow staff to receive, uh, medical assistance, uh, throughout the day, uh, which of course, uh, helps us in our efforts to have everyone present, so that's an easy one.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Second.
The Care South MOA request.
MOA request.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, passed unanimously. One-to-one initiative, request for funds, Mr. Parks.
I think that's Wes and Jimmy Tool, those.
Just tell us how much money you want, we're ready.
Okay. Um, I'll go through it pretty quickly. The administration is requesting Dell notebooks for the ninth, uh, through eleventh grade students at Marlboro County High School. The recommendation is authorize a lease with Dell Financial for option three, uh, which will provide eight hundred Chromebooks, licenses, power supplies, cases and setups. The purchase cost for option three is three hundred four thousand and eight dollars plus tax. The lease cost for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen will be forty thousand seven fifteen seventy-nine, plus three thousand two fifty-seven twenty-seven tax, and fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for filtering, for a total fiscal year impact of fifty-nine thousand and ninety-three dollars and six cents. The subsequent lease cost for, uh, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty will be eighty-seven thousand nine forty-six eleven, and the same for twenty twenty-one, that'll be eighty-seven thousand nine forty-six eleven, and in twenty-one twenty-two, forty-three thousand nine seventy-three oh six. The purchase price at the end of the lease is one dollar. The elements of the lease are part of a state contract negotiating pricing with Dell Financial. I'm pleased to indicate, although the one-to-one initiative was not budgeted in the district's general fund for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteenth, I'm, I'm confident our general fund will easily accommodate the initiative. I've attached a comparison with the district's expenditures through October thirty-first, uh, and last year through October thirty-first, and, and indicated in the report, the district's expenditures are a hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars less than last year. Uh, Jimmy Tool, Director of Technology, can provide information on the devices and elements. Uh, included in the equipment as proposed, Dr. Sterling Harris, Chief Officer for Instruction, can speak to the utilization of the devices for curriculum and instructional applications. My recommendation here is authorize the superintendent and board chair to execute documents related to the lease purchase of eight hundred Dell Chromebooks and related Excel accessories to implement the one-to-one initiative for Marlboro County High School, ninth through eleventh grade with Dell Financial Services.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the request for funds for the one-to-one initiative.
Second.
Okay.
I got one question, yeah.
I just wanted to, um...
They're getting us in at a low fee, we're gonna have to have eighty-seven thousand in the budget for the next two years, so I hope you can continue to find funds that we can save, but we think our children need this to progress.
Right.
Mr. Norton? It just seems that, um, based on present enrollment, we might be three hundred to four hundred short.
Yep.
Um, is there a?
Well, there's a plan to order more, uh, in the next fiscal year, so we'll, we'll be able to address it. If you notice, uh, we're asking, uh, permission to purchase eight hundred, and that's for ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students. It's not that, uh, we don't want the scenes to happen, but they're on the way out.
It's mid-year, that's what I'm gonna say.
So, uh, we want this technology to be used and usable, uh, for the students that are going to be returning to us next year. And I think with the information that Ms. McCall shared earlier as it relates to the RUS grant, uh, having this technology in their hands is only going to increase the possibilities, uh, for them moving forward.
Can we use some monies from the grant to purchase or to lease?
I can't hear you.
Can we use some money from that grant?
Oh, no ma'am, no ma'am.
To lease, none, even though it's for this kind of thing?
No.
All right, okay, well the motion's on the floor, you got a question?
Wait a minute, I, I'm trying to recognize Mr. Driggers.
That's okay. Well, I'm trying to figure out here, so what we're doing is the eleventh grade will take their Chromebooks with them to the twelfth grade next year. They would move them up, and you would order for the ninth grade coming in next year, you would order the new Chromebooks for them, correct?
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay. How does this gonna rotate?
Well, we, we would love to be able to move the Chromebooks up with the students. We started a pilot program with grades six through eight, uh, back in, in October, I believe.
Okay.
And so, we would like to advance them up, but because the eighth graders will be coming to ninth grade, of course, we won't...
Now you can hear me, sorry.
Of course, we won't send them out, uh, but to be honest with you, uh, we're still, uh, trying to work out a plan as to how we will move them up. So, if, students will return the devices at the end of the year, and then they'll be reissued at the beginning of the year, but we like to, as much as possible, give students the devices they had previously.
Okay, I guess my question, I didn't quite say it right, was will the twelfth graders next year have access to?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right.
There was a way to add to that score is that with this purpose, they'll put us over twenty-one hundred Chromebooks in the district, so, uh, approximately half our students will have them.
Got it. And then the goal, uh, progressively moving forward is to, by the year, uh, by next year this time, be in position to do, uh, devices for grades three through twelve, which of course, as you know, the earlier we can get this into their hands, but we also want to make sure that we provide the professional developments for teachers and staff to utilize, uh, these notebooks, uh, in a positive way, as opposed to just something else in the hands of students.
Technology is wonderful, but let's don't forget our books.
Would anyone like to call for the question?
Call for the question.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. All right, video surveillance system request for funds.
Uh, Superintendent, uh, superintendent has directed, uh, district personnel to begin the process and installing video surveillance systems throughout the entire district. Uh, we'll have to identify a qualified vendor, we'll have to design appropriate systems for each location, and in addition to that, we'll, following board approval, we'll procure individual systems for each location. Uh, you can see, I'm not gonna read all this, I know you all in a hurry. I, I did want to touch on a couple of things that I think's important. Uh, our expectations for the system, uh, include that only state-of-the-art equipment we use, systems will record high-quality video data, systems will be remotely accessible by first responders and school and district staff, and what that means, to give you a little clarification on this, if we have, uh, a, a need for the police to have access to the, to the video systems at any of our locations, that that can easily be, uh, made available to them. Um, the systems will be expandable, uh, systems will store thirty-day historical video data, and systems will be standardized throughout the district. We'll have all the same cameras, the same servers, uh, all will be same, uh, throughout the entire district. Uh, we've chosen to do the high school first, I think, uh, most of us would agree that, uh, I, I was over, uh, this afternoon looking at their system, and, uh, we're at a critical stage at our high school, y'all, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a pretty rough shape, and I think it's a vital part of the, of the administration of the high school, and so we started there.
How much money?
Hundred thousand.
How much?
Not to exceed.
Not, not to exceed a hundred or so.
And where are we gonna get the money?
We just had a ten million dollar bond referendum pass, but also, uh, we have additional monies that have come into the district, you heard Mr. Park mentioned earlier, sixty thousand dollars that's already been deposited into our account, and we look forward to additional monies coming to us at the end of this month.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I have a question, but we can do it wherever you want.
All right, let's do the motion first and then, then discussion.
Madam Chairman, I don't want the money to be supposed to be spent on BIS, to be nickled and dimed away, I've already made that clear, and I'm concerned about that, and here we start right away, looking at maybe forty thousand. I afford the surveillance equipment, I'd like to find that money, not from the bond referendum, until we've decided how we're gonna spend the ten million, but I will make the motion to authorize the staff to enter into the contract with approved vendor for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand, with the stipulation that I would prefer the funds be found elsewhere, other than the bond referendum. You might not want to second that.
At the moment.
You still second that?
I second that, but...
All right, any discussion? Mr. Driggers.
On this, on what you're doing here with your surveillance, in the high school, how many people will have the knowledge and the ability to be operating the equipment? Who will be trained, I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
Uh, we, we can decide that, but of course, the principal and assistant... We can decide that, but of course, the principal and assistant principals and anybody beyond that, it's just a matter of us making a decision and asking them to include the software on their machines.
And it's my understanding from what I'm hearing from you, I've talked with you, is these systems, this system will be in place where if someone broke in the door or something happened within, it's going to notify our police department, other people of nature like that. Is that what this will do? Will it reach out?
Our burglar alarm system serves that purpose right now.
Let me speak to that, if I can. The systems that we're trying to get in place, Mr. Driggers, will allow for law enforcement and emergency personnel to be able to pull and have access to our camera systems from remote locations. That also includes our administrative teams.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to find out here is if we're in school and someone comes in the door, God forbid, but somebody comes in the door to do something they should not do, these cameras are going to pick them up coming in the door, we're gonna see them, and is it going to notify the police and the people instantly?
No.
That there is an intruder that's coming in?
No.
It will not?
No, and I don't think you'll find a system that'll do that. We...
Okay, how do we, how do we contact them with this system? How will we contact the local law enforcement with this system? Will we still have to call nine-one-one?
We have SROs on campus, and then yes, we would utilize and employ the methods that everyone is familiar, and that's using nine-one-one.
Okay.
But I also would like to mention and comment, if I can, on the monies that were issued to us related to the bond referendum. There is not going to be a discounted effort for BIS. The monies that we have, and it's all included in the plan, it's on our website as well as what has been shared, not just with you, but with the public as well. Everything that we say we are going to do is in accordance and in alignment with the budget that we presented. So, I don't want anyone to believe that what we're doing at any school, whether it be the high school or School of Discovery, I don't want anyone to believe that's going to take away from the work and the monies that we have included that's going to go towards BIS. So, projects will begin, and there's a timeline for when projects will begin. I don't want us to not begin projects because we're waiting, again, on how we're going to best utilize the space at BIS. And that's the conversation that I mentioned back in the summer, and I'll mention it again tonight. That is a discussion that the board is going to have to have, and however you direct me to move, that's what we will do. But we have to begin work.
I appreciate that, but this board has already made motion to deal with BIS. That's not questionable. We did it months ago, so I just wanna be sure that that's understood.
Clearly.
Okay, so, so, did you say that part of the money is coming from the referendum?
Say it again, ma'am.
Did you say part of the hundred thousand dollars, the money is coming from the referendum?
I've not determined that. I can answer that question. I said that we did get sixty thousand dollars that was just granted to the district. We can use that money, but I also said that money included in the bond referendum has been set aside for the upgrade of security, safety and security measures at the schools.
Okay.
And that's for each school, and that's included in the plan. So, if we're being completely transparent, again, we have to follow what we said we were going to do.
Okay, so then I misunderstood something because I, to the best of my knowledge, it appears that I was under the understanding that until we decide what we're going to do with the money, that we're not gonna start just spending it.
Oh, no ma'am. That, I've haven't stated that. Again, if you look at the timeline and the information that was shared, it tells you... As a matter of fact, hold on a second.
As long as we don't spend the seven point five million dollars for the BIS, the other money can be spent on the other projects we're talking about.
See, that's what they keep saying, but that was not the agreement.
Here it is.
The agreement was that we was gonna ask for the full ten million dollars to do BIS. That was not the agreement.
This is, if you take a look at that, right, and that's, so it's clearly stated here, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, security and safety items, and it lists each of the school. We're going to begin in two thousand nineteen and continue to through two thousand twenty with renovations and additions at BIS. So, we're ready and prepared to start right now, but we have to have a larger conversation with the board as to how we're going to move forward with the students. So, that's not a decision that should stop work that will begin.
When do we need to set up to have that larger conversation?
Immediately.
I'm available tomorrow.
That's at the will and the pleasure of the board.
We need to move forth with it. So, when do y'all wanna meet again so we can have this conversation?
Tomorrow.
I don't know.
Maggie, you available tomorrow?
It depends on the time.
Well, I think also, if I may, and by the way, whenever you say meet, I'll meet, but there are certain things that I need to make sure I have in preparation.
And you have to give notice, you have to give notice to the community, too.
We have to do that, but I also need to have conversations with the principals because I think they have an important role to play in how we're going to make decisions for the schools moving forward.
So then I'm gonna leave it up to you to let us know when you're ready that we can make a date.
Okay.
I have a suggestion. We meet at five on the third of December. What if we come at four?
I can't be here on the third.
We need to do this sooner than that. We need to do this...
No, I'm being the superintendent's meeting.
A board meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, is that the board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I don't think that's sufficient time for, and we've got an executive session as well. This needs to be handled. The public wants to know. I'm gonna make a motion to table, I'm just gonna make a motion to table whatever this issue is right now until such time as we've had a meeting on BIS. I'm just gonna make that motion that we table this at this point.
I don't necessarily wanna table, wanna table this. I mean, I wanna move forward with the things that we need to do. I just wanna ensure that BIS is going to get the things that they...
BIS is going to get everything...
I don't necessarily wanna table this. I'm gonna take Dr. McCall's word, okay, but...
It's on tape, it's on video. I don't have any hidden agenda. So, again, I want everyone to feel comfortable, and I want to go back and say this. We stepped down in good faith and asked the community to grant us something, which they did. And so, I think it would be farce for us to do something that's going to violate that trust, because at the end of the day, we're going to have to go back to the community again for something else. And so, in order for us to be successful, we have to be successful with this endeavor. We have to be completely transparent, and that's why we created the brochures, that's why we posted it online, that's why we've gone out and spoken to various areas and segments in the community about what our intentions are. But I don't want us to delay what I consider to be of the utmost importance, and that is securing our buildings. We have to secure the buildings.
Where school shootings are now, and it may be us next, we never know. If we don't secure it now, and it's in the writing for the referendum that surveillance cameras are in there along with BIS, it doesn't matter which one to take care of first, as long as we hold true to the form of the referendum and do what we said we're gonna do at BIS. I think we don't need, I don't think we need to hold up the cameras and the surveillance to keep our children safe.
Can I interject something?
Yes.
I think the scenario that Mr. Driggers described a while ago, that if we have an incident here at the school, and law enforcement is called, having an adequate video surveillance system could save lives, y'all. It's about, they would be able to identify locations, they wouldn't have to go door to door. They could, by reviewing video, maybe track whatever problem is down to A room. And the system we have now is poorly lacking in any kind of capability toward that.
Is there any way we can make it an automatic referral to our first responders if there's a problem? Because that seems to me that we're talking seconds and minutes here. We're not, you know, if we're gonna call nine-one, we can do that. I am for cameras for safety, but I believe SRO officers are more effective, and there's been a lot of proof that cameras are good after the fact. They're not so good before the fact. If we really wanna keep our kids safe, maybe we need to be doing something else in addition to this. But I will, you know, this is a study, you know, they've done that, and that's why I'm concerned.
There are some things that we're doing in addition to, and I mentioned again, the changing of the front entrances for all of our schools and going to a card swipe system, making sure that we secure our doors. Now, we have buildings in the district right now where we can't safely secure the doors. They need to be addressed.
Especially at this high school. We've got some problems with our doors.
Just at this high school, but in all schools.
But especially here.
Whether it be McCall, BIS, the high school, we have some issues that need to be addressed right away.
We have many schools that are terror friendly.
Right.
Just ourselves.
Right.
Madam Chairman, I call for the question. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you.
And I was, I wanna throw this out. If everybody will wait till we get to the adopt resolution declaring the results, it's kinda spelled out in there. If everybody will look at that.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, employability credentials guidelines. Who's doing that?
That's Dr. Harris.
Dr. Harris.
This is short.
Greetings again, board members. Before you and your packet is a copy of the new employability credential. All it is is a, it's a new initiative that allows us to set aside a prescribed scope and sequence for courses for a disabled population that don't normally get a high school diploma, but it does require them to go through a scope and sequence for a document that we're able to provide to the public and provide to them that shows that they are employable in certain professions once they leave the high school. It's set up in a manner that if these students switch over to diploma track, it's got some congruence with the diploma track, but basically it provides these students, instead of getting just a local certificate, a kind of credential that they can use to get jobs and hopefully through Volk Rehab and some of the other avenues we have in their junior and senior year, we can get them internships into those jobs, starting so that once they graduate or once they depart high school, they have gainful and legal employment.
Madam Chairman, it's a wonderful program. I make a motion to approve the employability credentials guidelines, and I'm very grateful for you for bringing that to our attention. Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. I'm gonna do my left hand, okay? You're gonna confuse me terribly. All right, resolution to certify results of the referendum. Somebody please make that. Madam Chairman, we've got it. We know the bond referendum. I do wanna reiterate, since Danny's brought it up, that the referendum states, one, renovation and/or construction at Benisville Intermediate School, excuse me, Intermediate School. Two, safety and security improvements in all schools and certain other facilities in the school district, renovations at other schools in the school district. It calls for the Secretary of the Board to certify the copy of the resolution declaring the results of the referendum. I don't know if y'all want me to read that, but basically it says ten million dollars to be spent in this manner for a bond referendum, and that we approved it on November the twelfth after an election by our wonderful population giving us a very high approval rate, four thousand six hundred and eight to one thousand eight seventy in opposition.
Yeah, actually, the updated number was four thousand seven seventy-six to two thousand and seventy-five.
Okay.
I did send that out prior. I did get the update from the Election Commission.
All right, so I want you all to authorize me as secretary to certify that, because that's what it calls for. Someone please make a motion. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, you want, they said you didn't wanna read it. You want me to read the resolution? I think it has to properly be done. All right. I, the undersigned, being the duly qualified Secretary of the Board of Education, here and after called the Board of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina, the school district, do hereby certify that attached heretofore is a copy of a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Declaring the Results of a Referendum Held on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, on the Question of the Issuance of Not Exceeding Ten Million Dollar General Obligation Bonds of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina." The resolution. Which resolution was adopted by the Board at a meeting duly called and held on November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at which meeting a quorum was present and acting throughout. Which resolution has been compared by me with the original thereof as recorded in the minute books of the Board, and that such copy is a true, complete and correct copy thereof, and that such resolution has been duly adopted and has not been modified, amended or repealed, and is in full force and effect on and as of the date hereof in the form attached heretofore. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the school district this twelfth day of November two thousand eighteen. You wanna read the bond referendum, or can we reference it? You wanna read it?
Have to.
"A Resolution Declaring the Results of a Referendum Held on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, on the Question of the Issuance of Not Exceeding Ten Million General Obligation Bonds of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina as follows. Section one, the Board of Education, the Board as the governing body of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina, hereby finds and determines, A, by a resolution adopted by the Board on August sixth, two thousand eighteen, entitled, quote, "A Resolution Ordering a Referendum in the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina, to submit the question of whether the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina shall issue not exceeding ten million general obligation bonds in one or more series in one or more years, providing for the form of ballot to be used, providing for notice of the referendum, and providing for all other things necessary to submit the aforesaid question," end quote. The Board ordered a referendum to be held in the school district on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, the referendum, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the school district the following question. Shall the Board of Education of the School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina, the school district, be empowered to issue at one time or from time to time, general obligation bonds of the school district in a principal amount of not exceeding ten million, the proceeds of which shall be used to finance the costs, including architectural, engineering, legal and related fees of the following: renovations and/or construction at Benisville Intermediate School, safety and security improvements at all schools and certain other facilities in the school district, renovations at other schools in the school district, question mark. B, the returns for each respective precinct within the school district as certified by the Marlborough County Board of Canvassers, showing the total votes cast in favor of and opposed to the aforesaid question are attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. C, a majority of those voting in the referendum voted in favor of the aforesaid question. D, the referendum was duly and properly held in accordance with the laws of the state of South Carolina, including specifically Title VII of the Code of Laws of South Carolina in nineteen seventy-six as amended, the code, and the School Board Act constituting Title Fifty-nine, Chapter Seventy-one, Article One of the code. Section two, it is hereby declared that the referendum held in the school district on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, resulted in favor of the school district's issuance of not exceeding ten million general obligation bonds. Section three, the Superintendent of the School District shall cause a certified copy of this resolution and any other documents relating to the referendum deemed necessary to be filed in the office of the Clerk of Court for Marlborough County, adopted this twelfth day of November two thousand eighteen, School District of Marlborough County, South Carolina." All right, second?
Second. Could you repeat that?
All right, Danny, here we go. I tried to read it quickly, but clearly. All in favor, raise your right hand. Yay! The motion's carried. Now, before Mr. Coachman breaks bad here, we have one little detail to do. I've written down here Ms. Fleming as an alternate since she's not here tonight, and Ms. Owenation as a delegate, and Ms. Bright as a delegate for the November eighth, no, December eighth state meeting.
Sure.
Does anybody else wanna go as an alternate?
I did it last year.
Yeah.
I was an alternate, but I mean...
Okay. In case something comes up, I might have caught case or something.
It's good, though, it's good.
Okay, so, I make a motion that we nominate Ms. Fleming, Ms. Owenation, Ms. Bright, and Mr. Branch to go to the convention as delegates and alternates. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's carried unanimously. I'll sign it, you sign it, and we're good to go.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Coachman, go for it.
Make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Hallelujah! All in favor, raise your right hand.